I'd like to call to order the Plan and Zone Commission meeting of today, Tuesday, April 19th. We will start off with a public hearing. I'd like to caution everybody in the audience to please have your cellphones turned off, or at least very minimal, because it could affect our recording. We'll start off with the public hearing. And roll call, please, Commissioner Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Schneider?
Here.
Eichelberry?
Here.
Johnson?
Present.
Tomlin, present. Ingram?
Present.
Hepner?
Here.
Bransgard?
Here.
Reinhardt is excused. Manus?
Here.
Garrington?
Yo.
And Stalk?
Here.
We have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. We'll start out with our only new business. It's case number REZ 22-02. It's a request of Menard, Inc. to rezone the 4.48 acre property located north of West 65th Street and east of Harrison Street, parcel number X 0239-02A, from RMF, multi-family residential district, to I-1 light industrial district. Matt?
Okay, so for today's public hearing, this is the subject property is outlined in yellow. It's approximately four and a half acres of vacant land at the moment. It's located just behind the Menards building, to the west of the Quickstar gas station, and then north of 65th Street. Immediately abutting to the west is the Maplewood Apartments. Just north is Single Family Residential, and Main Street actually continues south and then stubs right at the subject property to the north. And then just to the south, you have additional Single Family Residential, as well as a couple different hotels. And then that's Brady Street, further to the east. So the purpose of the request is to develop the vacant site for an outdoor self-storage facility. So it's currently zoned for multi-family residential. The reason why light industrial district has been chosen is because that's the least intensive district where outdoor storage is permitted. So outdoor storage currently isn't permitted within commercial zoning districts within the city. On the screen before you is the concept plan submitted by the applicant. So it would be developed with outdoor storage units along the perimeter of the property, with an entrance point onto 65th Street. And then in the center would be additional storage units, along with trailer parking. And then that's a rendering of what the building would look like. So on the screen is the zoning map. So property is currently zoned for multi-family residential. And then you could see immediately to the west is also multi-family residential, with single family to the north, and then to the southwest. And then you have commercials. So the Menards is general commercial zoning district. And then just to the south, the hotel is C2, which is a corridor zoning district. And then the map on the right is just a further zoning map zoomed out. So the nearest industrial zoning districts are along 76th Street and the interstate, and then to the east of Brady Street, there's additional industrial zoning. So the multi-family residential district is intended to accommodate high-density residential with the mixture of different housing types. Limited commercial is allowed if it's compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And then our purpose statement for light industrial, it's intended to provide for a variety of manufacturing, fabricating, processing, distribution, warehousing, with mostly enclosed and low-intensity outside impacts. Future land use map is shown as residential general, as well as most of the area along Brady Street is commercial corridor. And then as you get further west, you get to that residential general district. And then again, industry, I'm sorry, industry, future land use is along 76th Street and the interstate. And then there's the industrial park just to the east of Brady and south of that. In terms of public input, the neighbors within 200 feet of the subject site were sent a letter notifying them of tonight's public hearing. And then a sign was also placed at the property last week. And to date, staff has received one written comment through email, which was included in the packet, which spoke in opposition to the rezoning. So staff will offer a formal recommendation and additional analysis at the May 3 meeting, when the Plan and Zone Commission will take a vote.
Thank you, Matt. Would commissioners have any questions at this time? Commissioner Tomlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matt, I guess we haven't had one of these for a while. I just want to confirm that if this was to move forward, there would need to be an amendment to the comprehensive plan regarding the land use map. Is that correct?
Correct. So it likely would need to be amended to industry.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. Any other commissioners at this point? Seeing none, would the petitioner like to step forward and speak?
Good evening, Tyler Edwards. I am a real estate representative with Menards. There's a lot to unpack with what we've requested. I know it's an odd request. So in no particular order, I'm going to try to hit all the different points of why we're doing this. One of them is, we have owned this land since 2007. We have never had anyone make an offer to buy this land. No one has wanted to develop this land. We have quite literally been sitting on it, marketing it. It is not priced high. We've been trying to sell it off and get it developed for a long time. Part of the reason is residential developers are choosing to invest their money elsewhere around the community, not in this particular neighborhood. So we have also marketed it to commercial users with limited success, because there's access and size issues with that as well. So we have decided that we want to try to do something with the property. Menards actually decided that we think it'd be good for us to own this particular land forever. I'm sure you're familiar that five, six, seven years ago, we relocated our store, because we ran out of land around it. If we continue to own this particular piece of property, we are limiting the chances of that happening again. If we ever needed this, regardless of what use we put on it, it would be available for us to use, and we could stay there for a much longer period of time. The reason we're requesting self-storage is because, quite honestly, besides Menards store sales and heavy manufacturing of trusses and nails and all other stuff we do, self-storage is really the only other business that we do. You're probably very familiar with the facility that we run, just down the street in our old store, quite successfully. It's full. We always have demand for outdoor storage units, even more than the indoor storage units. So we decided that we're going to try to use some of the land that we have available to, A, accommodate that, B, use the vacant land that we can't seem to find a good use for, and C, hold on to that land forever. Or create what we call a new business. You know, Menards already exists, and self-storage already exists, run by Menards, on this particular piece of property. Now, I will say, it's unfortunate that we had to make the zoning request that we did. We don't want industrial any more than anyone else probably does. In fact, that was our only option for this particular property. You know, the few dozen storage projects I've worked on across the country, storage has no home in a zoning code, not like commercial. Or Menards, it'd always be commercial or gas station. Storage is sometimes in industrial, sometimes it's in manufacturing, sometimes it's in... All of them is a conditional use. There's just no rhyme or reason. We had to request industrial. In this particular case, we are certainly willing to move forward with any restriction that you want to put on it, that it is only used for industrial, or not industrial, for self-storage on the property forever. Because, quite honestly, we either want this to be used for a Menards self-storage facility, or the Menards retail store operations if we ever need it in the future. We do build our storage facilities a little differently. They are not the typical chain-leg fence with barbed wire on top. We actually enclose them with the storage buildings themselves, quite similar to our lumberyard. You know, the warehouse faces in, the fence and the racking, all kind of self-screen. That's how we do our storage facilities, too. That keeps all the noise, the light, the view, actually inside, rather than being able to see that from the outside. Because at the end of the day, it will be next to our retail store. We want it to look nice. We want it to be there, cohabitating with us forever. That's the brief summary of what we want to do. You've seen the elevations. You've heard what I had to say. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We can get more. You know, there's plenty of setback in landscaping details we can get into, if you'd like to. We're just trying to fit this next to the store, next to the surrounding residential properties as well.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions at this time? Commissioner Eichelberry, is your...
Oh.
Thank you. Commissioner Bransgard?
I can...
Let me tell the commission, we need to hit the call button, not the talk button.
I'm sorry.
Until I recognize you. Thank you. Commissioner Bransgard?
I can appreciate that you... That you're hesitant to turn this into industrial use, but tell me what you've done to, if anything, to do outreach for multi-res purposes.
Sure. You know, being a supplier of home improvement products, we probably know more builders and developers than anybody else in town, to be quite honest. And this is continuously marketed through our store, and has been since it opened, I think, like, eight years ago. We know people, I guess, to say. And like I said, those people are choosing to invest in other parts of town, not this particular neighborhood, not facing this direction, not on this street. One, because access is tough. Two, because there's an established apartment complex behind us, that, quite honestly, we get told is in disrepair. Those buildings are missing shingles, siding. When it's more expensive to build than ever, they're choosing to build in other parts of town. And we also market it for commercial reasons, because we always thought it could be a commercial property, too. You know, just like the gas station. However, the size is a little awkward for a commercial-type use. It doesn't quite fit with a strip center, doesn't quite fit with a gas station, and access is really tough. You can't have a heavily-trafficked business on this particular lot, because you essentially have to have an unrestricted access point, which means gas stations and car washes and things of that nature would just cause traffic congestion on the main road and cause accidents. Whereas a use like this is actually low-traffic, quite honestly. People rarely visit, so it doesn't quite have that same impact.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Garrington?
Two questions. First of all, does this mean they're going to get rid of the storage facility on 53rd Street?
No, no. This is just in addition to that. That is full. We get lots of requests for additional space. We're kind of blending two problems and...
Yeah, I noticed you built some in.
Yes.
Okay, the second question I have is, will all of this be enclosed, all the storage areas be enclosed in the buildings themselves?
Correct.
Won't be anything outside?
Yes, I have pictures and maps, if you'd like to see.
Oh, yes. Yeah. I just wasn't sure that there would be any extra room for boats...
Yeah, sorry, I misinterpreted your...
Could you give those to staff, please?
Sure. I think we saw it, yeah. I saw the picture, but I just wasn't sure entirely.
Yes, so there is parking stalls in the middle of the facility for boats and RVs. Kind of like, you probably have never been back behind our existing facility. Behind the fence there, there are parking stalls within the confines. Now, you can't actually see any storage from the outside. I thought that's what you were asking. But there is vehicle parking that is actually full at our other facility right now, too.
Commissioner, are you through, Steve? Commissioner Tomlin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was pointed out in our staff report, and I think staff mentioned it on their second slide, that it was suggested that maybe you look at going to a self-storage facility enclosed, and you wouldn't have to look or go to a rezoning of such an intense zone Why? Why not enclosed? Why not do that?
Kind of an odd conundrum, when you think about it. One, because we have several hundred enclosed units already, which are usually leased to mostly leased. We already have that sect.
And just, thank you for saying that. I want to clarify, you're talking about the old facility on 53rd?
Correct, the old Menards store there.
Staff, does that meet the definition of an enclosed storage area? Is that what we're talking about here, that would be allowed as a special use? That type of facility?
Yep, so a climate-controlled, completely enclosed self-storage area is how we define enclosed self-storage. So this facility, because it's not climate-controlled, it's accessed from the outside, even though it's within a compound, and it's not climate-controlled, it's open to the elements for the middle part, it is considered an outdoor self-storage.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to get that example. So I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I say we chose not to build that for the one reason, we already have a lot more of those particular type of units. And two, because that's actually a much bigger, more cumbersome project, if you think about it from a size and the neighbor's perspective. You know, the buildings we're proposing here, honestly, are about the same height as the car corrals in the parking lot of the Menards store. They're not big. There's a line of bigger units, but majority of them, if they're looking out from their windows or their driveways, are very small. The walls are eight feet tall, the roofs are 12 feet tall. Much smaller use overall. Now, if we were to build a climate-controlled facility, that ends up being closer to the 20-foot-tall mark. It's much bigger. Now, granted, we don't want to build that. It's just a different type of storage, that this actually ends up being smaller and less intense, regardless of what the code says.
Okay, and... I... Thank you, that answers my question.
Commissioner Schneider?
I was just wondering, how many clients do you expect to serve there?
About 300, I believe. I gave all my maps away, actually.
It's okay, I counted them up. I was just thinking, do people usually... I mean, because I'm looking at the activity when you said usually they come once a month. So I didn't know if everyone, you know, if there was 300 different people, or several people had more than one unit, or what the... I don't know that, you know, your business very well. So just kind of trying to get a feel for the activity.
Sure, sure. So there's 355 units as part of the proposed plan. We like to say everyone comes about once a month, but that's an average. We have people that don't come for six months at a time. We have people that come every week. We've actually found that as people's businesses grow, carpet cleaning guys, contractors, HVAC guys, they can't necessarily afford the big office buildings, or workshops, or sheds. So they actually use facilities like this, and are bigger units, to run their business out of. And we actually learned that because we have connections with those people through our store, and they were able to actually use one of the storage products that we provide, or several units, to store their materials without actually having that physical office space. So it kind of helped promote the smaller business guy in some senses. But they visit more frequently than, say, you know, someone that retired and moved to Florida for four months a year, or something like that. We have that mix of everybody.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, maybe a point of clarification. You said that, so in the, on May 3, if you are denied this rezoning, do you plan on continuing to have the property up for sale? Or did you mention that you were going to hold on, that who you represent will be holding on to it? Could you clarify again?
I don't know that we have a definite answer on that yet. We think it's a good idea for us to hold on to it forever. And this business would essentially cover the bills to make that happen. You know, because if we expanded the store, the warehouse, that could be five, 10, 15, 20 years. We don't really know. But we think it's a good idea to have, because if you remember the Brady Street location, we essentially ran out of space to expand, and we had to find a new home. So, you know, I don't foresee us selling that off in the future, just because our main goal is the Menards store. We're just trying to make use of some of the extra land we have around it for the time being.
Is that all? Thank you. Any additional questions of the petitioner? Commissioner Manus?
Thank you. This may be more for staff. What I'm wondering about is, what could be done on the property as kind of an accessory use to the Menards store, in terms of the outdoor storage, or something similar to what's being proposed without a rezoning? Is there anything?
No, it would be pretty much for apartments for townhouse uses, is what the residential multi-family zoning would allow. It could be a place of worship would be another use that could go there, or community gardens or things along that line. But it wouldn't, in its current state and its current zoning, really be of much use to the existing Menards store.
Okay. Is parking allowed on it?
No.
Okay. Just asking, thank you.
Any additional questions at this time? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
I will now open this up to the general public. I will start with, if there's anybody in this audience that would like to speak in favor of this petition, please step forward and identify yourself.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Moll, and my husband and I are here to represent people that live on the dead-end street of North May, that is just north of where this facility would be built. Our house is the second house in from where we were seeing, and...
Point of clarification, are you here in favor of this?
Currently, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Currently, he kind of answered one of our questions. We just wanted to make sure our street stayed a dead-end street. We didn't want an access point. So that would be the only way we would oppose it, is we want... He said it's all going to be enclosed, so we'll be happy with that, so we don't have to look at all the lights and all the traffic, or have an access point on the back end, where our dead-end street then becomes a fairway.
Thank you. Anybody else in favor of the petition? Seeing none? Anybody in opposition to the petition? Please step forward. Seeing none? Final call? Final call for questions from the commission? Seeing none? I will now close case number REZ 22-02 at this time, and that would conclude the public hearing. This will come back to us on May 3. After staff does their review, we will resume on May 3. Same time, same location. We'll move on to our regular meeting agenda. Roll call, please, Commissioner Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Schneider?
Here.
Eichelberry?
Here.
Johnson?
Present.
Tomlin, here. Ingram?
Present.
Hepner?
Here.
Bransgard?
Here.
Reinhardt is excused. Manus?
Here.
Garrington?
Here.
And Stalk?
Here.
We have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. Report of City Council activity.
Okay, so we're starting to get a little bit busy at City Council. At the last City Council meeting, the first consideration of rezoning, REZ 22-01, which is the request of Petra Fennelly out on Utah Avenue, was moved on to second consideration. The right-of-way vacation request for the Dollar General on Rockingham Road was moved on to second consideration. And then the resolution approving case F 22-02, which is for Prairie Heights Fifth Edition, was approved by City Council.
Thank you, Laura. Secretary's report.
Move the report.
All in favor of the secretary's report is printed, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It is passed as printed. Complant committee, anything new?
I think we're actually going to have some discussion about an amendment to the comprehensive plan. Actually, just had an email conversation with Mike Richmond about it. So that process will, well, probably take place in, it might be the next meeting for a public hearing, it might be the meeting after that.
Thank you, Laura. Zoning activity, I see nothing. Subdivision activity, we have one item of new business. Commissioner Tomlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And that's what we have. Case number F 22-05, request of Seven Hills Paving LLC for a final plat of Brady 80 Industrial Park Seventh Edition for a one-lot subdivision on 2.99 acres, located south of East 59th Street and west of Tremont Avenue. Staff recommends that the Plan and Zone Commission accept the listed findings and forward case F 22-05 to the City Council with recommendation for approval, subject to the five listed conditions, and I so move.
Second.
Case F 22-05 has been moved and seconded for discussion. Matt?
Yes, so this is a continuation of an item that came before the commission earlier this year, involving the vacation of a public right-of-way that's unimproved, south of 65th Street, and then west of Tremont Avenue. So City Council approved that vacation at their March 9 meeting, subject to some conditions, one of which being that a final plat be recorded, incorporating that vacated right-of-way to the adjacent property. So this land is zoned for light industrial, and then also shown as industry on our future land use map, so it will remain in that fashion. And the purpose of the plat is to develop the property for a light industrial type of use. So on the screen is the proposed final plat. Currently, it consists of four separate sites, so this plat will merge it into one larger development site. And then the vacated right-of-way will serve as a flag for access onto West 65th Street. The applicant's working with the city's legal department to have that property conveyed, so that'll be upcoming before City Council within the next month, right, Laura?
Yeah, the process is starting this cycle, actually.
Yep, so they're working through that process right now. So on the plat, they have shown a 30-foot utility and access easement that encompasses that vacated right-of-way. So city staff are recommending approval of the final plat as shown, subject to the listed findings and conditions. So in terms of findings, it conforms with the comprehensive plan, prepares the area for future development, and with conditions, meets the city's subdivision requirements. So the five conditions that have been imposed, just a few to highlight. So the third one, approval of the final plat shall be contingent upon the vacated right-of-way being conveyed to Seven Hills Paving. Four, to revise the water detention note, to state no stormwater detention or water quality treatment will be required with this plat. Individual lot owners will be responsible for meeting stormwater code requirements at the time of future development. And then five, to vacate existing utility easements between the four separate lots, so that way it'll be a cleaner development site for the future.
Thank you, Matt. Would the petitioner like to step forward, please?
Mike Richmond with Townsend Engineering. I've got nothing to add to the comments, but I'll answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, thank you. Would anybody in the audience like to speak either in favor or opposition to this petition? Seeing none? Final questions, please. Again, seeing none? Roll call, please, Commissioner Tomlin.
Schneider?
Yes.
Eichelberry?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Tomlin, yes. Hepner?
Yes.
Bransgard?
Yes.
Manus?
Yes.
Garrington?
Yes.
And Stalk?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. Chairman, and that concludes the report.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. Future business? Anything you want to speak of?
Yes, so we will have the consideration of the Menard rezoning, and we will also have a public hearing for another rezoning and another right-of-way vacation at the next meeting. meeting.
Thank you, Laura. Communications, I would like to step in here. We've been working diligently on the bylaws, the executive commission, Commissioner Manus and Commissioner Tomlin. We met last night with Laura, spent a good bit of time in condensing and fine lining and streamlining, bringing up to date our woefully overdue bylaws. And we expect to see them back maybe as early as May 3 for general discussion, and we'll move on from there. We also discussed a couple of options about moving the election of officers instead of having it the first meeting in April, which happens to coincide with the introduction of new commissioners. We just, we thought maybe moving it back to, say, the first meeting in July to give the new commissioners time to know who the potential new or existing members are of the executive board. So that will be a piece of discussion also. We had kind of thought about doing it the first meeting of the year, but we didn't want to wait another six months to do election of officers. So we're thinking in July, give it a thought, and we will then proceed with election of officers at the next meeting, if we decide July. That's all I had on communications.
The only other thing I have to add is if you would like to fill out your financial interest disclosure form, we brought hard copies for people to fill out so that we'll stop bothering about it, so...
We would all appreciate your cooperation in that regard. Any additional business, anybody? Seeing none?
We'll adjourn.
All those in favor of adjournment, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, we are officially adjourned. Thank you again for your attendance.